Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is the Fred Wolf Park Committee meeting. Today is Thursday, May 29, 2025, and it is a little after 6:30. I am John Corangelo. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Obviously, as you can see, we're short on committee members today. We do not have a quorum. We will not be able to vote on anything this evening, nor are we planning on voting anything this evening, other than the minutes from our last month's meeting. Having said that, being that you're the only one at the table with me, if you'd be so kind to introduce yourself.
PJ Shanley.
John Corangelo.
Dan Denny.
Good evening, everybody. At this time, we have an opportunity for public participation. You're allowed two minutes per speaker. Therefore, if anybody would like to come up and talk, kindly do so at this time. We just asked that you identify yourself. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel Richard, and I am a resident of Orange. I'm here today -- well, first off, I'd like to thank the committee, or the two members that are here, for the work that you are doing at Fred Wolf Park. I know that the long-term benefits will be exceptional for our children and the community. However, I'm really here tonight to speak about some of the ongoing issues that I see and feel very strongly have been ignored year after year, and I truly believe that they need to be addressed immediately by the Board of Selectmen, by the Town of Orange, and the Public Works. There are some very basic things that need to be done on a regular basis to maintain the park while this committee is working on their long-term plan. First off, the condition of the driveway and the parking areas are, simply said, unsafe. The narrow and rut-filled driveway barely fits two cars going down it, and there are massive holes in the parking areas, and that's very problematic. I was just there dropping my daughter at soccer practice, and I literally could take a swim in at least four or five of the holes in the parking area. I feel that simple paving, periodically filling those holes with gravel, is all that needs to be done. However, that would take a serious commitment from our first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen to allocate the funds to make sure that that is happening on a regular basis. Year after year, these same issues exist, and nothing is or has been done about them. The second issue is the parking pattern. Absolutely needs to be established and marked clearly. Every time I go to Fred Wolf Park, which is multiple times in a week for either a game or practices, I'm never sure what kind of parking mess I'm going to encounter. Cars are parked in two different directions. Cars are boxing other cars in. The driving path is even blocked at times where you can't take that immediate left and circle around. It was that way tonight when I just went there. I really feel that the parking area should be lined. I know there are many gravel parking lots that are lined with chalk and chalking paint, and that would greatly improve the parking condition. This has gone on, in my opinion, for way too long, and it really should be a priority of the town, this committee, all of our elected officials, and all of our town workers, and I'm especially pleading with you two, I believe, that are members of our Board of Selectmen, to really take action and make Fred Wolf Park safer for the many, many families and community members that use it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate you coming up and talking to us.
Erica Higgins, 303 Drummond Road. Again, thank you for creating the committee. You know how passionate I am about this and have been for the last few years. I was looking at the map and the outline of what BNL has proposed for the routing for parking and for the traffic. I was just up in Middlebury recently. My son had a soccer tournament up there, and they have a one-in, one-out. It's the same loop, beautifully laid out. It's a very residential area. You would never know it. The homes are protected. The traffic is very well done. There's a pond in there. There's a meditation garden. There's walking paths. There's soccer fields. There's baseball fields. And again, it does not disrupt anybody's residential area. So I'm wondering if we could close Hollow Road altogether, because, like Rachel said, there's no point to it. It is literally pull over and let a car go by. It also goes right up against the playground. I don't think that we should have ever opened Oak Lane, Oak View, whatever that road is, and that we should have gone through Meeting House and protected the park away from the road, so it's not an eyesore for anybody. You can make it beautiful. We can keep the integrity of Orange intact while still making it a useful area for all of the kids and families, whether you're young or old. But I definitely think that that was not taken into consideration when I'm looking at this routing. And the other thing is, the farm fields that we are leasing out for $375 a year for grain for cows was not also taken into consideration in this map as part of the layout for the fields. So I'm saddened, because my father got to miss most of my middle son's soccer games before he died, because there was no parking for him to get to the fields to be able to see it.
Erica, they are.
What?
The fields are in the map.
No, they're there, but they're not part of the route. Like, there's no parking over there. If you look at it, it's just going around. There's no actual parking lot. If we were to utilize those fields, there's nothing laid out on the map.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be able to get to those far fields for someone like my dad to be able to watch games and be part of their grandchildren's, you know, lives. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I think one-in, one-out. I've been to many fields, and that seems to be working well, and it also, we were talking briefly, it would be able to close one entrance at night, so you don't have people coming in multiple entrances and doing whatever they're doing. It'd be protected, and it would keep the integrity of the people's homes around, so that we wouldn't have people going in all different directions, and we could keep it safe. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because it's definitely something that's been noticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Anybody else, ladies and gentlemen?
Hi, my name is Kenneth Flans. I live at 382 Ridge Road, which is within walking distance of Fred Wolf Park. Been a resident of town for over 42 years, and it's taken more than 30 of them for Fred Wolf Park to reach the point of its development so far. It has, in my opinion, been extraordinarily slow. I'm aware that there's been not one, but two master plans which have been developed for Fred Wolf Park, and what's currently on the ground bears little resemblance to either one of those master plans. My point in saying this is that I hope that whatever is ultimately decided on with this master plan is actually implemented, and it's important that the resources to make this beautiful map or maps into reality is also pursued, because otherwise, we're going to have a third master plan for Fred Wolf Park, which will be sitting in somebody's moldy basement 10 years from now. And I want to point out to you that I'm not a young man anymore, and so I don't ordinarily try to play soccer anymore. But soccer was a great part of my kid's life and my life for many years, and it's an important part of Fred Wolf Park. I hope it continues. But also now, there are other activities, such as pickleball, which I hope can be developed at Fred Wolf Park. I've seen in the plans that there is some of that, and it would be very nice for me and other neighbors who play pickleball. We could walk over there instead of having to hop in our cars and sneak down to Milford to play pickleball, or try to find a court when there's 20 other people waiting at High Plains. So please pursue whatever you can for ways and means to make whatever is decided on in Fred Wolf Park a reality in my lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Anybody else, ladies and gentlemen? And again, sir, just identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Richards. I live at 662 Peck Lane, which is part of Peck Lane. That's on the corner of Peck and Hemlock, which is where my family lives and my young daughter, where the new proposed, I think it's Plan A, has the exit coming out of the park would be directly across my house, across from where the cul-de-sac would be. And it's just very concerning from, you know, the amount of traffic that there is now. It's a very quiet neighborhood. I know people keep bringing up the price of, you know, farmland that's getting leased for, and, you know, it's not like it'd be going in those people's pockets anyways if they were getting more of a lease, but it's just very concerning, because Meeting House, as most everyone here knows, is already, you know, a racetrack. All day long, all night long, people flying up and down that street. I think diverting traffic to that street would only cause a lot more problems, you know, more people in and out, more people speeding, more chance for accidents, but, you know, one of my other concerns is, every day, I look out my front window, and the amount of wildlife that I see in that area is just huge, you know, every single day, from deer to turkey to bobcats. And to think that they would be, you know, taken out of the equation, not thought about, you know, it's another aspect that it just seems like it's a little overkill right now. I understand if the park wants to, you know, step it up a notch, but to completely, you know, just abandon other options and divert traffic to a ready, very main and speed-enhanced road, I think is a problem waiting to happen.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Jennifer Sulo, 497 Ridge Road in Orange, Connecticut. So I think the park is coming along. It's a work in progress. I would love to understand kind of when the next steps will be implemented. Personally, and I can speak for a lot of parents in Orange, as a mother of three boys that go to school in Orange, we're thrilled with the prospect of pickleball behind our house, basketball courts, which we really need, because the ones at the community center are incredibly rundown, and tennis. One of my sons loves tennis. So all that's great. I think, you know, from my perspective, what we're missing in town right now, as someone who is frequenting all of these different places, is an artificial turf field like Milford YMCA has. Lacrosse is growing in prominence. Flag football, tackle football, soccer, you could play all kinds of sports on something like that. Wanted to throw that idea out there for your consideration. As it relates to traffic, you can't please everyone. You're never going to be able to do that. The only thing we can do is try to have people follow the traffic laws, and personally, I don't think we need to clear any more space for that park until we've managed the space we currently have. And so I'm not saying, no, it's a terrible idea. What I'm saying is, let's work with what we have. Let's figure that out, and then let's move to the next step and decide if we need more space. I mean, personally, I've seen similar yourselves, bobcats, deer, all kinds of stuff coming into my yard, because, you know, they don't have anywhere to go. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you very much for public participation. It is a wonderful thing to see as many people here today. I think it probably trumps the amount of people we've had within a year at one meeting. So it's awesome to see people here and to see you all have your opinions as to the park, because guess what? This is not our park. It's all of ours. So to hear your comments and concerns are very much appreciated, and we will discuss those things when we have a quorum with our committee. The next thing that's on our agenda, unless there's any comments from you, Mr. Shanley.
Question. Can you vote virtually? Like, will you? Because you don't have quorum, which is understandable, people have lives. Can you vote via email? Or is this things just pause at this point?
Well, we weren't going to vote on anything else today, ma'am. What was tonight's purpose was a precursor to our big meeting, which is in June, late June, where BNL will present their plans and their recommendations. That would be something we'd be voting on. Generally, what we vote on in these meetings is our minutes from the month before. Can we vote on something from the floor? Sure. But it would just be a recommendation. For instance, let's say hypothetically, we were all here tonight, and we said, well, Ms. Richards said that there was an issue down at the park with parking, and we really need to address this immediately. We could conceivably vote on it, get in touch with the police, get in touch with our Public Works, get in touch with the Board of Selectmen, and have a discussion with those entities so that we can figure out why there's a problem. Okay? So we take down everything that everybody's telling us. That's shared with the Board of Selectmen. That's shared with our Public Works Department. The email that I received from Ms. Richards was immediately tendered over to everybody so that they were aware of it, and we appreciate that, because I'm not there all the time. My kids used to play at Fred Wolf Park, so I get it. I do. And that's the purpose of this meeting, is to come up with a plan that is going to be for the benefit for everyone from town. And maybe not just everyone from town, maybe people from out of town, because like I go to other places like you do. Someone mentioned Middlebury. I mean, it's a beautiful facility. We would love to do the same thing here. But we first have to come up with the plan, and then we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And with all due respect, these things are not cheap, and people are not going to be too kind to say, hey, we want to spend millions of dollars on a park. I would like to say, yes, let's do it all, right? But I don't have that final word. It's the town. So again, I appreciate everyone being here this evening, so I'm going to move on. We cannot address the approval of the minutes, so we're going to bypass that at this point. At this time, we have BL here, so gentlemen, if you have something you'd like to update with us, please do so at this time. Please identify yourselves for the record, because we are being recorded tonight.
You guys are going to see the back of my head, which is probably the best view you're going to have of this, but for the record, and I believe I'm live. My name is Dominic Saltruda. I'm a landscape architect with BL Companies out of Merritton, Connecticut. Do you want to state your name? We'll do it later.
Good evening. My name is Derek Hall. I'm Vice President of BL Companies.
Thank you, John.
All right, so we're coming to you today to give you a project check-in at your regular meeting. This is coming off the last public information meeting that we provided. We go through a couple of items, just we like to keep it chronological. So some of the stuff you've seen before, some of it's some new updated stuff, and then we'll go through the agenda in a second. First and foremost, you know, we know the purpose of the plan, so everyone has seen this before. We keep going back to this, even when we're working through our iterations behind the scenes. I'm not going to touch on the whole thing, but it's basically develop clear vision and roadmap for the future recreational development within Fred Wolf Park. What we're going to go over tonight is the Community Workshop 2 download of what we expected, or what we saw, the bubble-up type of comments, a quick project update, a concept shred update with some sort of graphs in draft form, the next steps, and then we'll entertain miscellaneous topics with the Board at that time. So going back to Community Workshop 1, we had some things that bubbled to the top in Workshop 1. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but what we noticed in Public Workshop 2, and that's what I'll get to now, is some of those were reinforced, and then some of them were brought in. We started reinforcing some of the items from Public Workshop 1. Those are the ones that are highlighted. And then the third access point was brought in. Obviously, balance was brought in. A couple of different trail and pavilion options were brought in, but the same pieces were ringing true, and it's some of the same comments that are being brought up tonight. You'll also notice under Active Recreation, synthetic field both got brought up in Workshop 2 and some of our stakeholder interviews as well. Excuse me. Quick update on the website. We're now over 1,700 visitors thus far through the end of today, 904 of which are unique, so that's an uptick from the last time we touched based on that. We have received a bunch of emails. We're trying to respond to. I know one woman, I think she might be in the audience tonight, reached out, wanted to make sure there was a meeting tonight. So there are seven, irrelevant, as they call them. Those are the emails that come in that are trying to sell you stuff, or there was a password reset or password. I broke my computer, so I had to re-get a new computer, so when I logged back in, it said there's an unrecognizable computer using it. So we document all that stuff for the public record. I do want to touch on balance, and this speaks to a couple of the items that were brought up tonight, where we're looking at that balance between functionality and environment. We're looking between terrain and community needs, demographics, clusters. We're working, and I highlighted the purple area, we're trying to balance out those concept plan alternatives. We have combined the two into one now. We are trying to work with those percentages, so we don't overprogram or over-design the park, but we also leave areas for future ideas that may come down the line in a 5-, 10- or 15-year timeframe. So the update. What have we been doing? Okay, we've been doing a lot behind the scenes. We're refining and developing the park plan, and we're focusing in on balance, safety, and security. There are infrastructure parameters that we're kind of taping a deeper dive than normal into. Because the park has developed so quickly, there are issues or items of concern that we have in terms of utilities, parking, drainage, and routings. We need to actually make sure that we understand those and make sure we plan for those areas as we move forward, so we're not backing ourselves into a corner with any concept plan that comes out or the final master plan. We are park phasing, and we're doing that in a fashion, because we want to be ordered for success. Gentlemen got up here today, and it's actually a good, a lot of the questions that were brought up tonight, I'm going to be able to answer some of those. That one is that ordered success. We took a look at the past plan. We took a look at what we were doing, what is adapted out on site, what the community needs are, what the environmental restrictions or limitations are on the site, and we're trying to order that in such a way that it can be a successful roadmap moving forward. Then we're developing the overall park recommendations. And park recommendations and programming recommendations are two different things. The park recommendations are the things that people are going to look at a little later in this presentation about what are the items that we think are going to go in, what items can move around. The programming is what we're looking at, and that was why we're a little delayed on some of our interviews, because we took a turn during the interviews when we started noticing program items of concern, and we want to make sure we're addressing those moving forwards, and they're going to be reflected in the recommendations that come out for programming of the park. That's for organized activity, the unorganized activities, passive, and also maintenance regime. Then we're going to look at overall construction implementation opinions. What does that mean? How much are things going to cost? We're going to do that as an opinion of conceptual opinion of probable construction costs. We're going to be looking at them in some phased areas. So you guys know, you know, you talked about synthetic field. We know that that easily is going to be $1.5 to $1.75 million. So we know those costs, and that's just, that's a blanket at a conceptual level, depending on how you formulate that. You know, we know how much lighting costs. We know how much a toilet room in terms of those systems are going to cost, and on a conceptual basis, so we can have some real-world numbers, because part of the recommendations in that plan will be granting opportunities or opportunities where you can kind of seek funding moving forward. So I'm going to go back to the beginning now. We talked about park theme, and balance is the theme that we've been talking about since the beginning, trying to strike the balance between active-passive, environmental, active-use, different types of use on the site itself, historical value. A lot of different things go into the mixing bowl when we do that. How did we do that? And we're going to call out the plan. I just use concept A as an alternative. We know we had A and B, and we started looking at options. We know we want to make sure, first and foremost, we're safe on the site. We want to make sure we can apply as many use areas or use areas that can be flexible on site, and that's what you saw. Things are planned out at different levels, dependent on need, current need, future need, and those can be adjusted and/or reshuffled in the planning process, but we want to make sure there is a process or the roadmap looking forward. This comes down to my most favorite slide in all the plans that I do. I use this a lot. What you're going to see next is a program and concept. Nothing is set in stone yet. It's starting to take shape. It's, you can say, the input received from you, the community, at this point. And it's based upon that input, the surveys, the workshop, and themes, and our professional judgment as we develop plans. This is that park portion of the planning process. We talked about this in the breakout activities from the second workshop, and we kind of organized the bigger picture. There are a lot of smaller things that go into this picture that aren't put into the picture until we start to develop this final plan. This final plan, before I go to the next sheet, is fluid, but there are things like gate access. There is accessibility issues. There's looking at pavilion sighting locations. There's a lot of smaller things, and there's a lot of more, what I would say, robust things like, okay, we want lighting in the future. We have to plan for that. Right now, the park does not have the infrastructure to support modern-day athletic lighting. It doesn't have the infrastructure to support the toilet room systems that we would want to see pushed into the park if you have a full build-out. That doesn't mean it's not possible. It means we have to start planning for that and how it's implemented within the system. The next picture is a development that we use internally. I might get in trouble for using it, but it speaks to the way we develop our concepts internally. And basically, if you remember what the concept plan looked like, we start laying out systems. People talked about parking. We talked about balance in parking. I'm going to talk about that first. We're looking for different balancing in parking. Some of the people that are working behind the scenes on this project are transportation engineers, civil engineers, environmental scientists, architects within our firm that are looking at different pieces and aspects of play, basically the areas of open areas where we know wildlife might be on the borders and the peripheral. We're also looking at how the build-out will occur, and we're starting to pick apart little areas, and we're reworking this. This will not look the same in a month. I can tell you that right now. It'll be close, but there'll be things that we move in and out. What we're starting to introduce, and you can kind of see it in the background of the upper right-hand corner, is we have grading in here, okay? We had grading from the beginning, but now they're what I call block grading, the area. The darker green zones you see around is going to be for water runoff from any type of, either it's paved, or even if it's not paved, we need areas to control water and flow of hydrology on the site. We started to utilize and bring in use areas, and we're showing right now essentially the same field configuration you had existing, but we bolstered out by one-plus fields. We've done that for a reason. It's in the upper left-hand corner. It's currently, I think, being used by youth lacrosse. What we're looking at is, as we start to develop fields, we have to build them correctly. Are they built incorrectly out there? No. They were built over time. They were built with the means that you had, but if you're going to actually build a new field, it needs to be brought up to a standard where it can take the amount of usage that's going to be required of that field. The other reason we're putting that field in is to provide flex space for other fields to come offline and/or rest and/or be redeveloped in future phases. The bottom part of the screen, if you remember from the breakout sessions, if you were there, we are showing a zone for pickleball, basketball, sport courts is what we normally call them. We have them sectioned in as tennis, pickleball, and basketball. We usually design them at this level as a sport court. What that means is, it's a defined shape that can be ambidextrous. It can be used by different types of, you know, depending on the need or what the want of the town is, they can be developed over time. You'll notice all the fields show lacrosse and soccer right now. That doesn't mean anything. We're just saying that they're all designated as multi-use fields. We're just, we're actually just numbering them 1 through 7. We're not saying if there's soccer. We're saying they're field use areas. There's pavilions that are moving around. There's a cardiac loop. There's going to be accessible walkways. The roadway network, which is in like a darker shade of gray, doesn't necessarily mean pavement. It means that we're trying to understand the roadway circulation network for safe navigation, and the bigger issue, I think, here is safe usage by any pedestrian that comes into the site. That is our biggest item right now. If you see Peck Lane, and I'm glad the gentleman is here, I'd like to talk to you afterwards if he has a second. We are calling for Hemlock to be dead-ended and Peck Lane to be brought through, and that's part of this system. A woman brought up, we have investigated. We are designing all roadways to be two-way. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be two-way on the final plan. They can, we want them to be interchangeable as much as we can, so we can control flow and we can control access, and we talked about safety and security. We can shut down certain parking zones dependent on time of year. We do show three outlets currently. We think you need at least two. Three is okay, but what it does is, there's relief built into the project. We are bound on the lower side of this drawing, which is the eastern side, with some nonstarter connections due to wetland areas, some unsavory terrain in certain areas, and we know the, if we go back to the very beginning when we had our check-in sessions in Workshop 1, the hydrology of the site. I also should talk a little bit about some of the recommendations that we're going to make people aren't going to see. people aren't going to see. Some of the recommendations that we have to make is you really need a good parameter boundary of the project. You need to have some borings done to the project, if we're going to be doing either roadways, drainage areas, if we're going to be taking on new fields, if we're going to be providing a sanitary system for a toilet room or toilet rooms up in the areas, we're going to need that. So we're going to list all that stuff up in the recommendations moving forward. This next one, I'm going to apologize for the colors, just going in. We took a stab, and this is only us as consultants taking a stab at a phasing plan. What this does is it starts to set priorities. Now, you'll notice in the orange, we have some loops involved. In order to do anything for the parking, unless it's just simple striping, we need to take that area offline. In order to take that area offline, infrastructure has to be built. Okay, so we considered that one. These numbers can move around, that's fine. Two, we have a question mark on the field, because that field could actually be built in one. Two is to really address that soccer field and that whole manipulation through to make a safer navigation for the playscape area. And then basically, three, four, five, six, three through four, five and six can be done in different orders, but it basically-
Can I interject and ask you a question real quick?
Yep.
When you're talking about taking it offline, do you have a timeline? Or how long would it be taken offline for?
For the construction of the park and lot? We'll work that out when we have the final configurations, because we're still modifying it. We're going to try to add drop-offs and things like that that haven't been added. They were placed, there's space planning that's done. But you could be looking at taking off, you know, if we do it, I like to do everything out there in seasons. It could be a season to take that parking lot offline. And ideal, like if you look at the last construction year, we had great weather last spring, last summer. It went south midway through last fall, and the spring has been horrible.
It's been awful.
So it's been, so in terms of construction and development, you're at the mercy. Like right now, you know, we have projects that are moving forward, and we would take that into account. That's why we would base it on a season to construct the parking lot proper.
Okay.
However, there are parameters, because we're looking at grades, we're looking at correcting some areas out there that we think have to be adjusted in terms of either environmental hydrology. Like you said, we can go backwards a second with that question, let me go backwards a second. You know, understanding the areas that we're going to have to like establish for water is a key element in that design. Do you want to interject as well?
Yeah, Derek Cole just wanted to add, that phasing plan is very early on. It is not set in stone. Typically, it allows us to start thinking about how you might phase that out and go after grant funding. I would further add, this looks really finished, because it's on the computer. This is, you know, back in the day, probably a napkin sketch.
Yep.
Right? And it allows us to kind of frame out these projects, potential costs, any environmental impacts. As we go get grant funding for blocks or phases of the project, there is a complete design process that takes place, typically three to four phases. Preliminary design, about a 30% completion, we gather additional public input, and you typically go to semifinal design, probably about a 70% completion, and then you go to 100%, which is basically construction documents. And you have public input and involvement throughout that as well. But we've got to start somewhere. Again, the master plan, and typically, the master plan is the roadmap that allows you to kind of go out and build this in these phases, and particularly, very beneficial going out to get grant funding either from federal sources, state sources, or even understanding how you might, you know, put in some local municipal money as well.
I think you're going to have this in July hypothetically, and the best-case scenario, is this like a two- or three-year plan, is this like a 10-year? Like what's your, based on kind of the projects you guys have done, what's your best estimate? Not holding you to it.
At a minimum, I would say a multi-year plan, and could be, could be the range of five to 10 years. It all depends upon the funding and how much, you know, locally you want to put in to jumpstart this and tackle certain projects. We typically are also trying to provide recommendations on aspects of the project that will qualify for certain things. So, infrastructure, there's a lot more broad grants out there, right? So we might be able to build some roads, drainage, some sidewalks, and other aspects as where as you're getting into, you know, some of the trails and some of the fields. It starts narrowing down a little bit, but there's still a lot of money out there for enhancement projects, trails and other things, connectivity. So we'll kind of align that and target, you know, kind of those pieces where there's funding, and it allows those to move ahead.
We'll say this to Derek's point. This is, and this is fantastic to have this many people here, but this is by far the most people we've ever had at a regular meeting. We've had a couple workshops with some people. We're going to need a lot of support to get the funding that we need. So please, continue to come to these meetings, talk to your friends. If it's 30 people that want this project, it's a backpack-burner issue. If it's 3,000 people that want this project, we'll get it done a little faster.
No, and I'm going to thank my employer over there for bringing that up. The plan, and someone had talked about how the plan, there was one plan that was shelved already. Part of the recommendations that we make is, once the plan is approved or is endorsed, what we, one of the recommendations that goes in there is actually plan review. All the projects that come through have to be pitted against the plan. There can be modifications, but it has to be known that, okay, we might skip to a different phase. Maybe the phases aren't the way we want them, that's why we say it's always preliminary phases, they're just recommendations, but always looking back to that plan to make sure that you're following it, or does it have to be, you shouldn't have to ever do another master plan. You should be able to adjust or morph your plan based on good knowledge of what the plan intent was and how you move the different projects forward.
Just to address the comment, we certainly appreciate the community's desire to move ahead and move ahead quickly. And there are some shorter-term things, you know, that we've previously recommended in terms of, you know, structured parking and some enhancements, certainly those can be undertaken. But I would caution based upon our past experience, if you don't have a solid master plan and understanding costs and permit conditions, it will fall apart. And sometimes rushing through the process, it doesn't allow for broader community input. We get different input, we're having three community workshops, not just one. I've seen some communities do one, then they go into design, and then the public shows up in force because they didn't have multiple opportunities to provide that input, and the project stalls because there isn't consensus. So we're somewhat purposeful of taking some time, really to allow for a deeper and more engaged level of community participation. We're getting there, so appreciate that, and just wanted to kind of, you know, provide that context as well, building the community's support and getting a consensus. We're not going to be able to keep everybody completely satisfied with every aspect, but we do look for consensus.
Are grants rolling? Because I remember a couple of years ago when I was looking, there was $38 million in Connecticut for infrastructure grants given to small towns, specifically for small towns. Do they come in like waves every couple of years, or is this something that-
Typically, they're authorized on a yearly basis, so each of the programs is funded on that annual basis. So various, you know, kind of small-town grants, community investment funds-
It was interesting to see what every town chose, some chose-
Steep grants, yeah, they typically, you know, kind of the state government level, they refund each program on a yearly basis. So we keep an eye on that as well, knowing when grant applications are due, so that we can kind of position those grant applications and partnering with the town and the legislators as well to position for those.
And we're always looking for different grant opportunities in terms of, you know, most of them obviously move through the state, some of the federal bound. There are private grants, some of those can be picked up for smaller portions of the project. And we'll touch on one thing. When we have recommendations, we always have what's called low-hanging fruit. Stuff that can be done either by the community, like the trails can be blazed once they're marked. Those types of aspects can be done. They have to be done in a proper order, they have to be done with, obviously, some understanding of where we're manipulating the land. Also, like you said, the rotating schedule, we stay on top of it. It's been a little less in terms of, but there are more programs out there. And we're constantly finding different programs that can be funded through various different entities. Do we have any more questions? Go ahead.
You had mentioned that one of the plans was shelved. I know there's two originally, so am I to assume now that this is the only proposal out there? You know, a draft-type thing?
We took, we took the two plans, and then we combined, based on the input from the last, from either online or from the last two workshops, we've combined them. A lot of them are, there's a lot of similarities between the two. They are on the website in the workshop two, I think, correct? Yep. And then what we're doing is just finalizing or adjusting certain aspects of those plans moving forward.
It just seems like we're going from zero to 100, you know? Just the rough number you threw out there, 1.4 million for the turf field. Imagine what could be done to the current park with that amount of money, just to, you know, make the current situation better?
There is, but, and that's where we're looking at how you develop the fields. Like in terms of, like we talked about, and I'll touch on this. This was Phase Two, for instance, when we started looking, or Phase One, we started looking at redeveloping that field. The field that was installed out there, it's usable, but it's not usable to the extent that it's really a viable field. There is a significant grade change on that field. We can think long-term, and this is where kind of Derek and I kind of, this is why we get paid to do this. We'll think long-term, maybe it goes in as a natural turf field with the idea that eventually someday you build it in such a way that you could convert it into a turf field. Same thing with utilities, we might not want lighting right now. We want to make sure that anything we're going to do is not going to drastically affect expansion in the future of either utility aspect or a program element. And then at the back of all this stuff, we really kind of balance that between overprogramming a site and then obviously making sure that we're safe on the site.
I just think it's important to remember, it's supposed to be about the kids. We're making it kind of all about us, what we want here. The kids don't really think about the grade in the field when they're playing the game. They're having great times, I play sports, all three of my children played sports my whole life. They're going to have a great time, no matter what type of field it is.
Safety issues, yep.
You know, to have a turf field, that's about us, saying we have a turf field in one end and other towns, whether it's Middletown or Milford. You know, there's a lot of us came to Orange because it's not those towns, you know? And it's different. Not emulating something, just to say we have something, but maybe it might not be needed.
One thing we're looking at doing by organizing and balancing, or table-topping the fields is we're consolidating. Right now, there's a lot of spread on those fields that isn't being used, there's overrun areas. We can pull those back, and it's a trade-off between natural space, transitional space, which is like your transportation portions on the site, walking areas, and then the fields themselves. So if we can consolidate, like right now, case in point, if we examine, and I'll use the lacrosse fields as this example, we know there's two fields there, we know there's a space in the middle that's currently not utilized, that's great. We need them to have ebb and flow, movement back and forth, either laterally or bilaterally, to make sure that they can actually play the game in a safe fashion. But there's areas on those fields that just doesn't get used, and we can capture that space, consolidate a little bit, and expand certain other use areas, so we can have a walking loop. We can have accessibility for a grandfather or somebody of limited means to come in and to partake in those activities. And we also, we need to consolidate parking. No matter what we do, we still have that parking issue. We're studying that in-depth, we have little information on usage provided by the town, provided by some of the sports teams, and then also looking at algorithms and things outside of my comfort zone, more than the transportation realm. They've run reports and things, so we know the balance of how much parking we're going to need. And part of it was, and one we mentioned, being able to manipulate that parking around. One thing you'll notice, and I'm going to go back to the plan, is right away, we want all the kids and all the, most of the members inside that loop. We can't make it all happen. There are parameters. We put pickleball in a zone for other reasons. There's offset distances, there's a noise factor, if you've ever lived next to a pickleball court, and I don't know if anybody here does, you don't want it. So we're actually trying to balance out where that occurs on-site, and if we can provide different activities in those zones as well. And then we started peppering in some other items that can be done, a fit-trail type loop that can be brought in. So we are studying a lot of that stuff, it's not a perfect formula, it never is. But we're trying to get it to that point where a plan can be kind of, a consensus can be made, so you can start to develop those pieces. Go ahead.
Is this the section where we brainstorm for a minute?
You can if you want to.
Just a couple of things I think is really important for the town. This committee already did look at something that was brought up by several people with young kids, is adding a little more to the playground. That was on your plan, maybe it's not indicated here, but putting out a smaller children section.
It's on the top-left-hand corner, there's plenty of room inside the actual playground.
Right, and I know that was a big, you know, big request, and I think that's part of phasing. You know, you can do that, you could do that anytime, really.
Correct.
The second thing was, I know our selectmen had said we need to pickleball courts, and I think that's important, because we've been talking about that through a couple of different elections. And we could do that. And if I could just brainstorm for a minute with your sequencing, it looks like you brought a road out into what I'm going to call the cornfields, okay? And if you did that, then that opens up a lot of possibilities, right? You can make fields there, because now you have, you have a road, you have parking. You can make fields so that you don't worry about taking these out when you're phasing. You can make football fields, you can do something. But to not do anything with it until a future design, I think we have a lot of people here that don't think that's a good idea. So, me personally, of course, I've been going to meetings, as you guys know, for four years with Park and Rec, and certainly two years with the Selectmen, because we need those additional fields. And you've walked it, you know the elevations, I could take a bulldozer out there on L-88, and probably in a couple hours, and make a football field and additional soccer fields. And it's 16 to 18 acres, so, anyway, that's an option in phasing that should be, in my mind, not seven, that should be number one.
Thank you, Tom. All right, you want to finish, Derek?
Yep, I can finish up.
Just one, can you just clarify, does your company handle anything outside the footprint of the park? Such as traffic studies, such as studies that are, you know, that show the effect that this is going to have on the surrounding neighborhoods? Not just inflow and outflow from the park itself, coupled that with wildlife, coupled that with pedestrian traffic trying to get into the park as well, coupled with noise. I think these are all topics that get bulldozed by our, you know, our wants for this park, you know? Like, and there are people who don't live within the immediate boundaries of the park, who of course also want this park. And I would love to have the park, but I'd love to see, you know, the, you know, some studies showing, you know, the swelling of traffic. I didn't even mention, like, how does it affect property values in 10 years? You know, is this a plus? And I think in certain circumstances, yes, it is.
If I may?
Sure.
Because I know that the public participation part was over at the beginning, but I've allowed it to continue, and I do appreciate the input. But to address your question, BL was hired twice. The first one was for a traffic and safety study, which they did. And in doing that study, they did-
But within the footprint of the park, though, correct? I would encourage you to, I'm not suggesting you haven't, but a lot of the stuff that people are bringing up has been addressed. I've come to every meeting, he's come to every meeting, it's all in address. Sure, but the need of the plan is starting to come out now, so and now- No, but the traffic study and stuff was taken place. Correct, but I understand that. So what I'm saying is now that there are, that the plan is becoming aggressively more clear- It's not aggressive. Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, like, we're talking about a timeline over 10 years, but so like, I plan on living in Orange another 10 years. I'm sure that's not, like, you're going to live in Orange 10 more years. You're going to be directly affected by inflow and outflow of this park, so. That's my concern, and I understand there's things like that.
Yeah, so if, if, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, I do appreciate the-
Oh, no, I agree.
Excuse me.
I can see you when I go to soccer.
Gentlemen, I appreciate you guys having a conversation with yourselves back there, but we do have a meeting here that we have to follow the rules. And public participation was over at the beginning, but I do appreciate people's comments. Sir, if you want additional information, keep coming to our meetings.
Sure.
The website, you can reach any one of us, you can reach Derek or Dominic at any time. Keep this conversation going, okay? And I appreciate your input. So going back, Dominic, would you like to finish up?
Yeah, I can finish off, strong.
Thank you.
So, in terms of what we've done, we're a little bit behind on the group interviews. We're going to have them completed probably in the next two and a half weeks. Some of those were backed up because of some of the utility things we were looking at. We wanted to have some more data in terms of the focus groups. We're looking at public workshop in June, and we'll talk about that in a second. Draft plan anticipated, and someone talked about the draft plan will be in July. Final plan most likely in August after a review. And then what we're also talking about is a final presentation in September. We realize the time of year we're coming into, and we think that- We realize the time of year we're coming into and we think that it can, it can steep for a little while, get that final presentation when we have more people in there. So what are we doing, the next steps that we're doing? We're finalizing our focus, focus group interviews. We're completing the overall site concept. We're going to perform public workshop number three. And we've already started the draft report with a lot of information. What we need to do now is, and what I need to look at is setting a date in June for the workshop. I said the twenty-sixth. We were leaning towards the nineteenth. I highlighted a few both federal and local events in the shaded areas. I believe Friday the sixth is middle school graduation. I think tenth is high school graduation.
No, the eleventh.
The eleventh?
Oh, well, you've got middle school on the eleventh. I don't know about high school.
Okay. So it's ten, eleven. That was close.
Yeah, no, it's both. High school's ten, middle school's eleven.
Okay, well, we can change that. Like I said, but it's going to be formal with informational. We're going to be addressing the plan, the phasing, the findings and the recommendations. And those are all anticipated. We know those are a work in progress. But that's where we want the reaction. You know, and we can turn around the advertisements to you guys pretty, pretty quickly. It's already set up. So you guys just have to pick a, pick a date for me. I will put back, put up for the people that are here, the website and the email address, so you can email comments and you can go to the website. This presentation will be on the website, I'm hoping tomorrow, if Jessica's in. To get it loaded, I sent it to her earlier, so that'll be up on the website. And then as soon as we pick the date, we'll put that on the website as well.
And Dom, if I could jump in, BL Companies, we do planning and we go through full design and construction documents. So we're able to support our community partners throughout the full lifecycle of the project. And yes, we have traffic in-house. We work with the state DOT. We have environmental professionals. Again, with the master plan being completed and you're going to target federal and state grants, those are great and they come with a lot of conditions. Certain studies, whether traffic, if you have X amount of parking spaces. So when we get to the, I'll say completion of the master plan, again, we're not done. It may prompt with some of that grant funding to do additional things in the future. Environmental studies, parking, traffic, you name it. And we'll be taking a look at that and recommending to the town any additional items that need to be addressed before you launch into design of a project.
One, one more plug. I do have a sign-in sheet. It's not mandatory, but it is appreciated if you do sign in. You can provide a little or as much information as you want. It's just a documentation because we're, we bring all this stuff together in the appendixes of the plan every email.
If you sign in, put your email address. I'll, I'll shoot out an email with the next date and time for the meeting. And please come to the workshop. This kind of turned into a workshop with a lot more public participation, which is great. This is the whole reason this committee was put together, is to hear concerns, ideas from the community. This is a community project, so please continue with your ideas and concerns.
John, I just have a quick question. If we have emails, like say, parking pictures and examples, do you send that to you and the Fred Wolf Park email?
You can send it to PJRI and we'll make sure that this committee gets it.
Okay, but does B and L, do you guys want to see that too? Like if we have pictures?
If you want us to.
We share everything-
Okay, awesome.
With, with them.
Okay.
What I usually do is if I get anything, I send it to the record and we have a record of everything. Take me to PJ. And we've got our own. We were out there today. We were out there last week. I mean, you might not see us. We try not to be creepy when we're out there. We're not photographing kids. We're just out there observing and we've seen the same thing. I was talking earlier. We've seen people blow right through the stop signs. We've seen, we've seen all the same stuff.
I do have one quick question. I've been to all the meetings and we're talking about adding fields, walking paths, all this, which I'm all for. But the thing we're not discussing, which should be number one, is the traffic safety. I live on the corner of Ridge and Hollow. I almost got hit by a car going to my mailbox because this woman turned on the street at forty miles an hour. Before anything gets expanded, subtracted, moved, number one priority should be safety. The speed bumps, they're not doing anything. I've seen cars lose parts.
They fly.
The traffic commission's latest idea to slow it down is painting lines on Hollow. They're not stopping or slowing down speed bumps. They're not going to stop through painted lines. I have to stand in the middle of Hollow if my daughter wants to ride her scooter on what should be a cul-de-sac. Just because everybody's in a hurry to drive down there and drop their kids off for an hour. I love having the fields down there and I want our community and our children to have as much as they can. But something's got to be done to protect our safety. And I don't feel as it is.
I appreciate that comment, sir. I mean, again, when we originally were formed, our task was to do a traffic and safety study. And we implemented some of those measures to see how they would fare. And it sounds as if by your comments that they haven't fared very well. So we have to do better. And so, you know, we'll continue to work on those things. And to be honest with you, and this is just my opinion, regardless of how much safety and traffic studies we do, sometimes the people behind the wheel has to take responsibility for their own actions. And in order to counter that, we're going to have to get our law enforcement officers to be present in that area. Because we could build mountainous speed humps and speed bumps and all these different types of things.
Automatic ticketing, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean, listen, we're in a digital world, right? I mean, but I mean, I'm just being upfront and honest with you. I mean, we, we would all like to make this a hundred percent safe, but nobody can do that. But I get what you're saying. I hear you. So yeah, you know, we'll continue this project and try to do the best we can and hope to God that it, the implementations we do work. Right now, they're apparently not, but we will work-
I'm just concerned for the safety of the kids on Hollow.
Yeah, and I'm concerned that each and every day. No different than the baseball fields or the soccer fields or any other area. It's, it's a concern.
John, Hollow Road hasn't changed since these meetings started, since all the committees. I mean, I, I've been going for what, four or five years. Nothing has changed on Hollow Road. It's got holes all over it. Speed bumps are nice, but they don't do anything. But the road itself is a single road and you've got an enormous amount of traffic. It should either be corrected or closed. It's dangerous.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And, and it just continues. I mean, it's not addressed. I don't blame him, you know?
I don't blame anyone. And I, the, the comments are, are heard. I mean, I'm just a committee member who, who hears you and forwards the information on to our board of segment, the police department, our, our traffic and safety, our, you know, our, our, our highway department. I mean, I don't personally implement these things, but I'm doing my best as a committee to have your voices heard. So I'm excited to see this amount of people here and to hear what you have to say, because I take down everything we're saying.
Well, I was the only one that was there at the first meeting.
Well, you, you certainly have been here pretty much all the time and so has Tom and a few others. And I appreciate having you come. But to hear the public voice their opinions is what this is all about. So thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Because you're talking about dinnertime with children and you're not going to get tons of people. You're going to get grandparents like us and, and people that have very vested interest because they live there. But there are real problems. There are problems even just in crossing the roads. We've said, any day, a kid is going to get hurt just crossing because it's really not set up well. Putting a bunch of blocks is really very nice, but it's not enough. And the playground is very ill-placed and we said it right from the very beginning. The biggest piece of merchandise there, and this playground was planned for kids before they entered school because they can't go to the town playgrounds. The biggest piece of playground, and we have a picture of it, is for five to twelve. That's ridiculous. A fortune was put into that piece and it's, it's not a playground for little kids. It should be for preschool kids. And it's in a terrible location. You know, if you're, if your older sibling is playing soccer, you know what's going to happen with running across. It's just a matter of time for somebody to get hurt. And, you know, doing things after the fact is really a problem.
Well, we're not moving that. We know that. It's there and we're working around it. And that's what we're doing, the best that we can.
Are you putting in equipment that's for the appropriate age?
It's been on our list to talk about it. We are aware that there is that gap in age. So yeah, it's something that we've discussed.
Well, right now, we want to fill in the gaps within the playscape zone. And if you look at the plan, we, we're going to try to bring a pavilion into that area. Remove that central, sorry, remove the central roadway is the biggest issue right now. Because right now, like you said, it's, it's, there's a safety factor that we're looking at.
I just have a real quick, I don't know, interview you guys. Thank you for your time. And also, you used that C-word before. I would be cautious about consensus. I don't know that you were ever going to get consensus. I think it was mentioned previously that whatever you do, somebody's not going to be pleased.
When we first started and you came in, workshop one, I said if we, if we get six, sixty percent, fifty-five percent, we're doing great when we know that.
Yeah. So, okay. I don't know, do you?
Well, thank you all very much for coming this evening. We're going to adjourn the, the meeting at this point. If you have any further questions or concerns, don't hesitate to reach out to any one of us. But thank you for coming tonight.